Incredible. Here we go.
Um, gentlemen, our new ordinance officer, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Easiest part of your job.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, sir. Roll call.
Benny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew. Charles Olti.
Here.
Mark Serbuk.
President.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Uh, approval of the agenda, additions or corrections?
Uh, are we gonna go into close session? Oh, we're. No, no, okay.
I, I would like to add, uh, under new business, um, ordinance enforcement. I'd like to put that on C and change claims to D.
Okay.
Anything else, any other?
All right.
additions, corrections?
I'll make a motion to accept with change. Support?
Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Olti, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, uh, declarations of conflicts of interest, any commissioners?
I've none.
None?
Nope.
Okay, item four, review of minutes, May twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes.
Not gonna say anything, I wasn't here.
Didn't someone entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Or?
Motion Commissioner Serbuk, support from Commissioner Olti, discussion, I would like just added under, just to make sure, just for the meeting minutes, I guess, this is Chairperson David is requesting a survey, go out to departments on ordering, I would like to say on ordering supplies local versus online. She would like this revisited, I would just like something simple stated in there like that, please.
Yeah. What was that?
Uh, right here.
Oh, 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 you're on, on ordering, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Ordering supplies local versus online. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, uh, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, committee of the whole meeting tonight.
I read the ten minutes and make a motion to support them.
Support.
Motion Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Olti.
Oh, you're aware.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item five, public comment and agenda item matters. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Okay, correspondence, we received correspondence from Genesee County related to Jewish Heritage Month, and while the answer related to their meeting minutes and agenda, those have been received and filed. Um, item seven, public hearing on resolution to remove a member of the Special Housing Advisory Committee. I need to make a motion to go into a public hearing, correct?
Yes. I'll make a motion to go into public hearing.
Wave a motion, Commissioner Scott?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk, Tim?
So this, uh, public hearing is necessary anytime we, uh, need to take action to remove somebody from a committee before their term expires. In this case, Sean Gilbert of the Housing Committee has missed five consecutive meetings of the Housing Committee and the open house event that was held earlier this year. Uh, the, uh, Housing Committee discussed, uh, uh, that lack of participation and have, uh, recommended that he be removed from the committee. Now, for the board's purpose, uh, you know, tonight, the purpose of the hearing is to allow Mr. Gilbert the opportunity to be heard regarding the action, in effect, due process. So, I was absent because, or whatever that might be. Um, i- from the committee's standpoint, when we have a member not present consistently, that does in danger at times, the, the ability even to get a quorum together. So, by not participating at all, literally, the work of that committee could come to a standstill. Now fortunately, we have, uh, very active members and, uh, very few missed meetings, so we haven't run into that. But we have run into that with previous committees. Uh, in fact, as late as, early this year, we were, uh, constantly struggling to get a quorum of our opioid committee together. Uh, so this, this is a very real issue. The purpose of the, the hearing itself is just to let Mr. Gilbert be heard. Uh, he was provided notice of the, this, uh, action pending for tonight and was told that this hearing would be held. He is not present, so really has no, uh, uh, ability to address you or ask any questions. But the opportunity has to be provided, and that's the, the formality of this, uh, uh, hearing here tonight.
Okay, any comments, commissioners?
I have none.
I have none.
Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk?
So, for, support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Item eight, consent agenda, I think we can.
I'd make a motion to consent to all three.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk. We have item AA, resolution to support for Northern Michigan Amtrak service. Eight B, resolution to accept a quote for transit building, commercial entry door projects, and to rescind resolution twenty-four dash one-one-seven. Uh, eight C, resolution to remove a member of the Special Housing Advisory Committee.
Make a motion, we support these three resolutions.
We have a motion with support, any further discussion?
Uh, just, everything's been reviewed.
Motion, uh, we, we have a motion from Commissioner Scott and Serbuk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My bad.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? There is some, there is some monies involved, so, I mean, we're gonna do a roll call.
Charles Olti.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes. Item nine, resolution to acknowledge MSHDA, Michigan Neighborhood Program Funding Designation and Agreement to Complete the Full Application Process. This resolution, um, is sponsored by Housing Consulto- Consulting Services LLC on behalf of the Ogama County Housing Program. Ogama County is interested in the continuing effort to improve the existing housing stock and in, increase area home values to directly provide energy efficiency and health and safety improvements to eligible household having incomes equal to or less than eighty percent of federal property level per U.S. Department of Treasury guidelines. On May eighth, twenty twenty-five, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority announced that the Ogama County was tentatively designated to receive a community development block grant award of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars contingent upon successful completion of a grant application and required compliance steps. Approval of the resolution will acknowledge Michigan Neighborhood C, CDBG funding designation and commit to completion of a full grant application by September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
We approve the resolution.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Olti, any further discussion?
Thank you, guys.
Tim, do you have anything to add to this, this is?
I will characterize this as bureaucracy at its best. We're just having to agree that, uh, we acknowledge the funding was designated and we'll be happy to complete the application, but that's just kind of an odd thing that we would have to have this formal of an action for that state, but whatever, well.
This isn't an annual, correct, is this something?
Um, this is, uh, well, uh, my neighborhood program's been around for a couple of years now, but, uh, these are generally put together, uh, on a, uh, funding availability basis, and it comes from CDBG, meaning from the federal government. Uh, and in this case, the state allocated a number of the dollars toward that my neighborhood program, so it's, uh, kinda looking like annual, but not necessarily, maybe next year they have another program they use.
Leanne's always very, very good with distribution of these funds, so.
Hundred percent, okay, roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes.
Charles Olti.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Item nine B, Marine Patrol Funding. Notice was received late on Thursday, May twenty-second, that all current and past applicants for marine safety grants that funding for the twenty twenty-five boating season is currently unavailable. DNR is pausing processing of applications pending clarification of the scope of new terms and conditions from the United States Coast Guard. If DNR is unable to resolve the uncertainties with the Coast Guard, counties will not be able to seek reimbursement from DNR for marine safety expenditures. The fiscal year twenty twenty-five marine enforcement budget of eleven thousand four hundred dollars assumed a marine safety grant of seventy-nine hundred dollars, roughly seventy percent of the total budget. Per resolution twenty-four dash nine zero, positions contained in the position allocation list, which are supported in some part by a grant, cost sharing, reimbursement, or other sources of outside funding, are only approved contingent upon the county receiving the budgeted revenues. If anticipated outside funding earmarked for a position is not received or the county is notified that it will not be received, said position shall be considered not funded and removed from the approval resi- the approved position allocation list. Although not required, the board may, at its sole discretion, allocate local funds to offset the loss of grant funds through a budget adjustment. Representations of the sheriff's office will be present to discuss this option to stabilize marine enforcement activities for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Someone under, wanna entertain a motion?
All right.
I guess it's, never mind, they're not emotions business, come on up, oh, I knew that.
We've got new information too.
I appreciate all the information this week on this, the emails, so.
So you should have an update on your iPads from the DNR, we got it today at one o'clock. So, with everything that's going on at the federal and state level, the state must have made a decision that they're gonna do a seventy-five twenty-five as far as funding reimbursement. So basically what that means for us is that seventy-nine hundred, that's currently budgeted, twenty-five percent of that would be county responsibility. Um, that's basically what we're looking at at this point. Two years ago, well.
No, I was just doing the math in my head.
Yeah, I didn't do the math, I just been printing off.
Nineteen seventy-five.
Nineteen seventy-five?
Yes. It's a fine year.
So that would be the county responsibility if we spend the full seventy-nine hundred and that's on the general lake patrols. Um, so I, basically, that's where we're at.
What's your thoughts?
I, I think, two years ago, this happened, so, but the, the Marine Patrol, normally it's a hundred percent reimbursed by federal funding, which is what that trickles down through the Coast Guard and that. Two years ago, though, the state of Michigan did, and Ogama County was reimbursed at the twenty-five seven, or, yeah, twenty-five seventy-five. So this is a repeat of two years ago. So, for that little amount of money that we have to match to get the seventy-five, we would still be able to maintain the same plan that we had in place for Marine Patrol for the twenty twenty-five season.
So where would we get this money?
Well, this is all, uh, general fund money, so, um, yes, we could move from contingency and that would probably be the cleanest way to do it, and there's certainly nineteen seventy-five in there to do that. But just designate that for Marine Patrol and, uh, just simply go on record then tonight that we're gonna proceed with the program as budgeted and, uh, direct me to go ahead and make that adjustment in the general fund.
I guess, oh, God.
Won't they give us seventy-nine plus tonight? But nine hundred, that's the way I'm reading it here.
Well, I think the caveat's gonna be is that we'll, they'll go back through the application process and they'll, they'll earmark a set number.
Well, I don't know.
That'll be the max.
Give you a little bit more, I mean.
So seventy-nine, we anticipate, that's what we got from last year, we got paid seventy-nine, that's in our.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if you wanna give more than that, that just means increased patrol.
Well, the way I'm reading it here, if you want five thousand, you gotta put up sixty-two fifty to get it.
Correct, but they, going into the start of the grant, uh, the, going in, well, yeah, but you'd just be spending that in general fund money. Right now, with the seventy-nine, it would just be that nineteen seventy-five. If you want additional Marine Patrol, it would be nineteen seventy-five plus. We would still get that, that seventy-nine, that, the maximum amount they're gonna award Ogama County.
Right.
Cause that's what we did two years ago, we got seventy-five percent of it. With the federal grant, we get up to the max of, like last year with seventy-nine hundred, we got seventy-nine hundred back.
And I will say that the seventy-five twenty-five, back in the day, was the norm. There was no pass-through money from the Coast Guard. That's relatively new within the last ten years or so. So, I mean, this is.
Not on your iPads too, just before the email came from the DNR, I did send about five years of the stats that were submitted to the state of Michigan. So in twenty, twenty twenty-one, they went to the online grant system with that and what you were sent is part of that reporting to there. And you'll see the activity related to Marine Patrol over the course of that online life activity. Uh, it was kind of a last minute thing, but I was able to go back through there and get that to you, just for your consideration.
Appreciate that.
You know, it can be looked at now with this new information and talk more about it the law enforcement committee here, if anybody has questions, but.
Um, I, I guess, can you just explain or maybe reiterate to the public that it's, uh, listening or going to be watching, just how important the service is?
Well, I think it's very important on multiple different reasons, especially on your, your holiday weekends and your busier weekends during the summer. There's so much activity, especially on our waterways, um, the safety of our waterways, not only with some people operating under the influence, but the safe operation of flotation devices. When something that happens, it's usually pretty bad. And then you run the risk of water injury or water death by drowning and that type of thing. So, the presence, uh, you know, is primarily on education, uh, but they also do enforcement as needed for people that don't comply after contacts and that type of thing, or if it's a very serious type of, but, you know, your registrations, um, some of that minor stuff, we, we try to get people to comply with that, similar to what occurs with animal control. But your safety issues like wrong way or flotation devices, you know, you might get one and then we see you again type of thing. It's really important and the, and the volume, especially on our bigger lakes. I mean, they get pretty active during the, the summer on the weekends, and that's primarily where we focus. So, we've got a good team of marine officers currently built so that we can get more balance as far as contractual services and getting out to the other lakes. Um, so with the two additions that we trained and have in our mix currently, I think we're gonna be able to, we've already got a game plan, I've got two of them identified, they're kinda helping oversee the program, we've got the hours laid out based on our current budget. So I think we're gonna see a lot more activity with our resources.
So all this is already in motion now, it's just the funding that we thought we had.
Correct, yeah, I, I mean, all this is in place, we did freeze it over last weekend, given what happened on Friday. Uh, we cut it way back so that we didn't have as much activity, so we didn't have the expenditures until we had some more answers. So, moving forward now, we'll move forward on the seventy-five twenty-five, if you're on board with that, we'll just operate within the budget that we currently have.
I don't see what, what option there is, I mean, I think that the service is pretty important, it's, it's, uh, lakes are are utilized around here, especially in the weekends and holidays.
Oh, I agree.
I think it's pretty important.
I'd make a motion that we allocate one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars come from contingency for Marine Patrol funding.
How much?
One thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk, or excuse me, motion by Commissioner Serbuk, support from Commissioner Olti, discussion? Commissioner Scott, do you have anything?
Um, I'm just reading, um, I know we got a contract with Lake Ogama already, but there's eighteen other, eighteen other lakes that are coming throughout the summer, you know? Yeah, of course, some of them are big ponds.
Some of the smaller ones.
Kind, but, but there are eighteen other ponds, so, for the public to know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Roll call vote.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes.
Charles Olti.
Yes.
Anything else, Paul?
Thank you.
As, as originally planned, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item nine C, uh, added ordinance enforcement. So, I think us going to our townships, the top two complaints I seem to hear repetitively are roads and blight. Um, so I have had numerous conversations with Ryan Veder, who is our zoning, um, planning and zoning gentleman. And it seems to be kind of issues with enforcing ordinances, tickets, violations. It's, it's, uh, seems like a, a non-revolving door, and it doesn't really seem like a lot of things happen very quickly. I understand it's a process. Um, I color, cover Hill Township and also Richland Township over there in Prescott. They've had some ongoing issues over there with people living in some, uh, campers, trailers, that kind of thing. And then over this past week, there's a case up in Shady Shores, it's been ongoing now for two years. And not really sure if it's a zoning thing, if it's a building thing, it was a structure that caught fire, burned down. It was labeled or burnt, I should say, um, is non-use and individuals are still living there and causing a lot of commotion, so there's gonna be more to come on that. But I guess, when we, when I first, uh, served, our prosecuting attorney's office used to deal with these tickets and enforcing them. Um, so I kinda asked Ryan as far as what, what's happening now, and I, and I understand we have a legal team, but our, our legal team is quite a distance away. They're having to travel here when these rare court cases do occur. Um, I guess thoughts on if able, if our prosecuting attorney's office is able to take this back over again? I think it needs to be, um, somebody who's invested in the community, aware of the community, uh, somebody who's present, who can have these numerous conversations, whether it's with building, whether it's with Ryan, whether it's, um, uh, I guess thoughts on this?
Well, at the MTA meeting Tuesday night, which you probably hear reports about, the three of us were there. Ryan addressed this exact same thing to, with the townships and, and stuff. You know, it, it, it falls back on the townships.
Exactly, no.
Um, you know, I, I sat on planning commission, we talked about it countywide, but, you know, that's a big job for the county to take on. These townships really need to get a hold of their zoning, planning and, and blight and everything. Um, and take care of it, you know, do it, they can combine, they can combine, they can.
They have ordinance officers, they have that.
Yeah, well, some, some, some don't.
That's, uh, mine do.
Yeah, yours.
All of mine do.
Uh-huh.
But then trying to get the process as far as ticketing and, and it's a, it's a
Oh, stop.
Very tough.
Yeah.
And at times it even gets violent.
Oh, yeah, because, you know, somebody's blight is somebody's treasure.
Uh.
They're, they're working on that car, it's on blocks for the last twenty years.
But then when that comes back to the county, which a lot of these do, it's a lot of Ryan's time.
Yes, yes, it is.
And then it's a lot of our legal, uh, our current legal team's time as well. Travel?
It's the township attorneys that enforce their ordinances, the county attorney, they're not involved in it at all for township blight ordinance violations.
Our county attorneys have been involved in a few cases that Ryan's involved with.
With Ryan, yes, but not township blight. Township blight is township blight.
Okay, that's fair, so maybe I'm, maybe I'm not.
Yeah, there's, there's certain things that I know that Ryan said at MTA that vehicles are on wheels, we said mobile vehicles following the colonies. But as far as, he said, if I remember correctly, that's about all the, at the county level, that we can take care of, or vehicles that are mobile, doesn't take care of the trash, things like that, that's up to the, each of the townships, so.
Thoughts?
Um, I'll make a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, I really appreciate that you brought this up to put on the agenda tonight. Um, obviously, you know, Mills Township, you know, which is, which is my only township. Um, you know, we, we struggle with blight issues. Uh, we do have a new blight officer, he's here, here tonight. Steve, I really appreciate you taking that job on. Um, you know, our board has really done a, a turnover there. We've got a lot of good, um, momentum going. Um, we did have a blight officer, some things didn't go, go right there, and he, he left and, you know, we've already into getting to June and we're not getting anywhere, and now Steve's on board. But not to get too long-winded with that, I, I, I think where you're going with this, Commissioner David, and this was a question that I was actually gonna bring forth, especially after listening at the MTA meeting to, uh, Mr. Veder, is there any way that we can help assist the process? Cause it seems like there's some roadblocks when the townships are trying to do, do the job. And now some townships, it sounded by the, the meeting the other night, they do not have an ordinance officer, but the majority of our townships do. Obviously, again, my, my township being the, you know, population-wise the largest and blight being a, a pretty major issue. I think what I've seen in the two-plus years that I've been here, um, well, we never had a strong blight officer, that's the first main issue. But when they were trying to do things, it sounded like they were always running into roadblocks. And I'm not saying that that's district court, but if there's anything that we can do to try to, to help them, you know, it's, I find it interesting that the prosecutor's office used to be involved. I don't know if Tim had any information on that, but I would like to, to know more about that. Cause I think this is something that if we can be more of assistance to get rid of those roadblocks, to, you know, to help these townships get this blight under control, then I would like to do that.
And, and I think, uh, uh, blight is, yes, and it is significant, but also Ryan's involved in a lot of cases, individuals living in campers. Um, it's not just blight, it's, it's numerous cases that he's involved with. And again, having to deal with our legal team that's not present in the community is time-consuming, frustrating, I'm not saying, uh, that they're not a hundred percent capable, but I personally would rather have somebody if they're able to do it and willing to do it, somebody that is vested in the community, that is local, that is present, um, to walk upstairs and to, uh, prosecute somebody or attempt to, I, I don't know all the proper verbiage there. The less roadblocks, the better, the less time, the better. Um, I think this is something we need more information on, because I'm hearing more and more and more of this. And I'll get to that when I get my report on what happened last night at the, uh, planning.
Oh.
There's gonna be more to come on that, more responsibility, so. I don't mean just blight, the, Ryan's involved in a lot of things.
Yeah, well, like living in campers, well, that's a zoning violation, that's not blight.
Correct.
Well, that would be something that, that, that we have a zoning ordinance, uh, for campers. You know, and, you know, and, uh, um, we changed that a few years ago, modified it and, and that campers don't send on lots for, after November. And it's tough to, it's tough to regulate all that stuff. And then what happens is, we don't, we, we don't have the money for Ryan or anybody else to just drive around looking for things. They have to come through by, by way of complaints. And that's what's happening with even ordinance officers, they gotta get it by complaint. And then, you know, a lot of people, they don't wanna put their name down, because I don't wanna be singled out as the complainer. Uh, there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of roadblocks to even get it, the ball rolling. And then, once it starts, uh, I can remember some high-profile cases here in this county with, uh, with blight and, and zoning in, in, in things and cost the, cost the county a lot of money. A lot of money, and it was brought up at MTA, you know? Tim got to questioning whether or not the county was gonna charge the townships for, for like zoning and things like that, planning and, and I, I let, I let Tim answer that, because I have brought that subject up, that we're gonna do all this work for these people. And I think they should pay us something. You know, if we're gonna fight their battles for them, but.
The zoning, it's, zoning is not fighting their battles, those are our battles. There's just a lot of times, there are a fine line between blight and zoning, but yes, the camper issue seems to be getting more and more prominent.
Well, the city of West Branch, the township of West Branch and Edwards Township has
I understand.
Has their own zoning and, and planning and, and, uh, you know, so, I, I, I've said, I've said this in this meeting many times, uh, the demographics across our, our, uh, our, our county almost deserves that some townships band together, Foster, Foster has one farm in it and, and a whole bunch of lakes, resort areas, and Logan Township's got one lake with, with resort area around it and, and and, and many, many farms. But we're making, we're making rules to fit both places. You know, when they start talking all these resort areas like Foster Township, and that's my area. But Rose Township has the same kind of thing, get together and sum up with your own rules. But we don't wanna do that, you know, that costs township money, let the county take care of it.
So let's go back to where I'm, I think I'm getting off track here, and it, let's go back to the specific case of Shady Shores. Again, this has been two years in the making, this is a facility that burnt down. It was then, uh, labeled as, uh, non-livable.
Uh.
Uh, now there's individuals still living in this facility that's now causing quite a few problems. So this. So this whole area is now involved in this. Spend, Ryan's been, uh, called, Tim, I think Ryan had conversation with you as well on this specific case, and it sounds like it's gonna be. Uh, building issues, now Brian Stein's gonna be involved in this. So let's go back to my original question, which was when this comes to a head, which it's headed there. And it sounds like, uh. A lot of problems are happening around this, this individual or this family, um. When this comes to a head and it has to go to court. We're gonna have our legal team drive two hours or however far they come versus possibly a office. If they're able to, again, that's able to take on this case. So trying to collaborate schedules from our legal team and, and I'm, just more and more time and roadblocks happening. So, like this specific.
What if it costs us a contract or local attorney?
That's what I'm asking.
We can look at, look at that option and weigh it, you know. If, if there is a local attorney that wants to do it, you know.
Because the more and more this, this, this case continues, uh, I think the worse it's gonna get. I've had numerous people call me over this past week, so. Um, they're getting very frustrated. Tim, do you have anything to add to that?
An idea, uh, to chew on it, you know, that's certainly from the zoning standpoint, I think that may be, uh, an area to explore. On the issue of the blight, and you know, that was, as mentioned, a, a topic at MTA this week. You know, the thought occurs that all of the townships involved in that, and we can't be involved, we don't have the legislative authority to do a blight ordinance, but. Townships could get together and we could help coordinate this, uh, get together and form an authority. Uh, that would enforce the blight ordinance if, uh, all the townships were to pitch in for that, they could have a single or a couple of, uh. Enforcement officials, uh, adopt ordinances at the township level, that deal with the blight. And just kind of coordinate their efforts, I think part of the struggle has been, there isn't really one township that can. Take this on with the resources they have available, they really can't do it alone. But if a group of them got together, I, I think you could really, you know, start to see some progress in that arena. But it would take majority of the townships to participate in that, and like I said, we could help coordinate it. And they could form a civil infraction authority that would then be able to write the tickets, I don't know, I'm just not well and versed on the. Uh, authority of the prosecutor in that situation, but if the prosecutor can take those on, great. If not, uh, the authority could then, uh, you know, go about finding an attorney or whatever it takes to, to follow through with courts. Uh, but that coordination, I think is key to it, and then you've got some similarity across all the townships about what to expect. And this is what blight is, there's no question, you know, go to the other side of the township line and find a different definition, it's consistent. Uh, so it makes it much easier to enforce. But then that, that keeps us out of it, again, we can't be involved in it, but it, it, it get, will get the job done, so just, you know, a thought that. I'm certainly willing to help, you know, create that, that kind of thing, if it's the direction that we wanna go. Again, we can't do the enforcement, but I think we can help, you know, put something together like that.
Yes, Commissioner Wilt.
I think this is a really good conversation. What if we tried to get the stakeholders together and set up a meeting? And we get the people in the room from the prosecutor's office, the district court, to all the current. Um, enforcement officers in the county that work for the townships. We get everybody together and we just start a conversation.
And you know, Don Kohanik sounded like you, but I think it would be great if he were available and could offer some legal guidance that way. I mean, that's something we can do to help the process along, but he may have some ideas too on just exactly the most efficient way for the enforcement to take place. Just, again, a thought, just to kind of help move this along and. For that matter, I mean, we can draw up, you know, whatever agreements there need to be with the township, some kind of internal local agreement to form this. And I don't think there would be any problem. Housing that individual, whomever it might be, over at the annex, but I'm right between, uh, Ryan and, and Brian's office. And he got everybody right there, uh, and again, their coordination, I think that's what that's gonna all be about. And then Ryan, with his expertise on zoning, can maybe offer some suggestions and get a really good program that way. Uh, but I, I think it's very doable, I personally, uh, just from a professional standpoint, would very much like to see a model like that established. I know there have been a couple across the state, but I think that really is the name of the game these days, you've got to have. That level of coordination, everybody participating, and then we'll finally be able to get some action.
I like it.
Can we put this on the committee of the whole for next week, so that way we continue this conversation, because I know this isn't going away. Great, more to come on that, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Claims, uh, claims was total of two hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents, and I will make a motion to approve claims.
I'll support your motion.
Motion with support, uh, Commissioner Mayhew and I actually. Uh, new claims this week, uh, some, I took a few notes, bats, the bathroom handicaps, there was a bill in there for that, some, I think some of the equipment was purchased. Animal, the animal control monthly bill, electric bill for the county building was nine thousand dollars this month. Uh, inmate housing, I was kind of, uh. Surprised by these numbers, I guess, Claire was nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, Gladwin inmates was twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Summer taxes went out twelve thousand, twenty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents, and then the new wall, it looks like in the corrections was twelve thousand, a hundred and seventy-four dollars. Those are just the things that I wrote down. Any questions, anybody?
That question, the, the new wall, that's in the, in the new, the new.
I'm assuming it.
Sheriff's Department, right?
I'm su- I was assuming, yeah. Was twelve thousand, a hundred and seventy-four dollars. Is that complete now?
Complete, was good.
Good, that was the bid, yeah.
Yep, quite a while ago, so I was surprised to see that come through.
So what were you surprised about the housing?
Then I was just, just, um, there was, there was one other one on there, but I didn't write it down, there were three, because the other one wasn't very much, so I didn't write that one down. Just to see the numbers, it's the first time I'd seen the numbers.
Okay.
It had it all combined in there, medical, or, uh, they had it broke down, I guess I should say, versus being combined, yeah, like how much that cost, the medical was very, very cheap. Um, seeing the twenty-eight thousand dollars for a month was, looked big, but then once you sit down, it didn't look so big. That make sense?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Anything further on that?
Jenny David.
Yes.
Charles Bulte.
Yes.
Mark Serber.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Any unfinished business? Administrator, Controller, is your report?
All right, I'll start with the meeting we had this morning with the courts over the county building security, remember that handout from, uh. Last meeting about, uh, formatting, the, uh, security screeners and the bailiffs. That's a very good meeting, uh, we, we have to tweak it somewhat, so that'll be back on the committee of the whole meeting next week. Uh, with those results, I think we've got this structurally worked out. Uh, there'll be some behind the scenes things we'll need to do to make sure payroll works the right way, but that's pretty commonplace with any of this. Very good meeting, though, I think we've got, um, a pretty good mindset all the way around on how that's gonna work. Uh, in the report that's on the iPads, a couple of things I want to point out, the first one, very good news, Wise Heating and Cooling has reported that our boiler replacement project. Will be complete on Monday, pending the final state inspections, those state inspections have to happen. I think they're once a year, it might be once every other year, uh, but that's the last part, the, uh, first boiler that was installed. The manufacturer gave that the green light, said, yes, it's all been installed correctly, so our warranties are all good. Uh, we also will receive an energy efficiency program rebate from DTE of one thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. Within ninety days of that final state inspection, uh, so that'll happen too. The light project resumed this week, I don't know how far along they are, but I do know they were waiting, just like Wise was, on some supplies to come in. So they were back in earnest. And then the last thing I'll just report on re, for the, for our purposes tonight. Uh, I did get an email from Department of Treasury and they wanted to schedule a conference call on June thirteenth with me, just to go over. Our fiscal year twenty-four budget and just talk about, uh, some of the progress the counties made. I point this out because this is now, uh, well, the call will happen in June, that, that call to me came. Two days ago on May twenty-seventh. Every other year since I've been here, that call came or that email showed up within hours of the audit being filed at the end of March. And so I, I think this is a good sign that we weren't at the top of the list this year. You know, I appreciate that they want to follow up and see the momentum continue, but I, again, I think that's a good sign that we're well into June before we're having that conversation. So again, good work on the board's part, uh, for the last few years, getting all that in line. Uh, any questions or anything, I'm happy to answer.
I got.
Comments, go ahead.
Um, I had spoken to Tim and we can probably this on the committee whole, and we're not gonna get this figured out overnight, but. You know, and I do, we need to start putting back on top of the radar is, you know, we have a facility over there at the jail. Our taxpayers are paying some thousand dollars a year. You know, we said, obviously, the transition's been in process since October first, and we understand the importance of the transition, and we've had challenges and. We're working our way through them, but the next part of it was, is we had to stay steady and continue to brainstorm and strategize to figure out. What other things could possibly happen with that building to create revenue for the county? Um, Tim and I have been brainstorming a few times and Tim, if you wanna say a little something about it, or we could talk more on the committee whole about the possibility of. Bitching out to the Sheriff's Association and the other.
Yeah, definitely, but we can talk, you, you have greater detail next week if the board wishes, but it, you know, pretty, uh. Basic concept is we have a facility there that does not have active inmates in it, so it, it makes it very appealing to do training, you don't have to work around. Uh, you know, an, an active, um, uh, facility that way. Um, as Commissioner Wiltz, he said, I think the Sheriff's Association maybe is our first. Um, call, because obviously counties are running, you know, jails, and so they, that would certainly be open there, but also, I mean, who knows, maybe even, uh. Department of Corrections at the state level, uh, this might be an option for them as well. This could do a few things for us, obviously it gets our facility going, but it also gets people into the community who'll use the restaurants and maybe spend the night or whatever. So there's some economic benefit for the community as well. Uh, but it is, I think, uh, an opportunity really like no other in the state, it is, just don't have facilities like that, uh, ready to go, so. Definitely worth, I think, pursuit, and, you know, if we don't get any takers, fine, but I think we'll get some takers. You know, it's there, it's available, uh, really, it's, I don't see us having a backlog of requests, so, you know, almost available on demand.
And it's relatively new. Makes it a bonus.
Did you guys have thoughts on that?
I, uh, we have to explore.
We would definitely do this in conjunction with the sheriff's office too, uh, obviously we have an active sheriff's office over there too, so we need to make sure we're not disrupting that.
Anything else for Tim?
Yeah, can I just, one thing I forgot, I tacked onto the report several pages on alternative funding for trial courts. This is a handout I got last week at the conference, uh, at a session that definitely lived up to its billing, uh, in terms of what the. Uh, trial court funding committee's been, been up to. These are questions that have been gathered for the last few months across the state about this plan, and I think it's very worth your while. If you get an opportunity to sit down and, and glance through some of this. Uh, there have been some changes in the direction they've gone, as we expected there would be, uh, but I think all changes for the good, and if this comes to fruition. Uh, we're gonna, I think, have a much better environment for funding courts and something more certain as far as the county budgets are concerned. Uh, about what we would be obligated to do. The commission is hoping to get legislation in front of our state legislators by fall. Their original timeline would have it early next year, but they're gonna try to get this done ahead of the election cycle next year. This is something that's been on the, on the front burner at the state level for twelve years now. You know, it's taken us this long to get to this point, uh, one of the clear messages that I received was that this is not something that even if we. Fast track the legislation, it's not gonna happen overnight, it'll probably take upwards of a decade to fully implement. But at the back end of this, we would end up with a maintenance of effort, uh, fund, just like we do with community mental health and, uh. Our health department, that we would be obligated to each year. Any cost for court beyond that maintenance of effort would come from the state. And that's it, and they would have a single unified, uh, system of, of employees as well, uh, and staffing levels established at the state level. If the state were to come through and say this county needs another judge or needs another magistrate, the state would pick up the cost for that. Uh, a lot of good things in there for the county, so I encourage you, if you get a chance, uh, to go ahead and run through that. There is a much thicker report, if you're that interested in it, I can, I could certainly provide that too. But I think we're on a very good track here, and I, I hope it happens sooner than later. Like to be around to see it implemented.
Any other comments, questions?
Thanks, Tim.
No.
Elected officials and department head reports, there's on our iPads, we have the medical examiner report, which I find very, uh, interesting, so I thank you for that. Transit report, treasures report, uh, clerk.
Uh, Breckville, New York, Ogumart County clerk, um, this past Tuesday. Um, took to the post office fifty-five hundred jury questionnaires, um, to be mailed out to the community. Um, that's for next year's jury pool, um, so. Those for the public, if you can return those within ten days, you can bring them back to the county building. There's a bin at the front door that is secured shut, um, so it can't be tampered with. Um, you can mail them back, or if you want, you can come hand deliver them to my office. Um, I received a letter of resignation today for the full-time financial clerk position in my office. Uh, she has decided to pursue other employment opportunities, so I'm requesting approval to post for that open position.
No problems.
Who, who was, I guess I didn't, how long was that individual, was that the? The last one, was that the last individual?
Yeah.
So she wasn't there very long, correct?
Five months.
Geez. What do you need for that, Tim?
Just you telling Brett go ahead, you don't even need to make a motion, the, the point is to bring those here and if there were. Reasons to not fill a position, I think that's where you'd wanna jump right in.
Where will people see this posting, so they know where to look?
Um, on our website.
The county website?
Yep.
And we have to post.
When's it gonna be vacated?
Um, she told me two weeks.
Sheriff, do you have a report?
I don't, but I apologize for being late, the state covered incident, I don't have anything.
Give us something.
It was a very long and challenging holiday weekend.
How come?
Because continued.
What are you seeing a lot of?
It was just challenging. Between the influx, uh, you know, this whole jail transaction, transition has been challenging. And, uh. Uh, this past weekend was just another example. You know, kudos to the employees that we do have, they're, they're making what we can work. And we've had some unfortunate incidents over the weekend that were really tough. Um, dealing with inmates and scheduling in hospitals and. It was just very trying, and I can't say enough about. The employees that we currently have, we wouldn't be able to even function to half the level we were if it wasn't for them, so. It's just been, it's been a long goal and. You got a lot of beat up people, but they continue to come out there and help us try to get the job done that needs to get job done, so.
You guys.
Called in some assistant from Saginaw County, um, can't give them enough props, they stepped up last minute and gave me some resources that. Were much needed in it to manage the situation, so.
Wow.
Called in some favors.
Complicated situation, then, situations or situation?
Well, the primary one that caused everything else to snowball was, was difficult. And somewhat complicated, but with limited resources to manage that becomes the big challenge. And then to try to protect the liabilities of the county, which is another aspect of it, that we try to manage as part of it, so.
Did you get that other officer, full-time officer that was recently approved, is that position filled?
Well, there was that second recall, so we have seven.
Got that.
Where there's a resignation pending. Uh, so we're gonna have some movement in the next couple of weeks, which will be updated as, as things occur.
So you have another full-time corrections officer, is in training or is full, is?
No, it, it was one of our certified officers that was in layoff that accepted a recall.
Okay.
There was some miscommunication as far as.
I read that email.
So. We are back at seven bodies, we will resignation will be back to the six. That means we'll be actively, there'll be some movement and then potentially could be a separate position in some capacity available.
Administrator, or, uh.
That's right.
Okay.
The, the movement, yeah.
So there is currently one position still open over there, correct?
No, currently there's seven bodies, there's seven employees currently. When the resignation happens, we'll be down to six employees. Then we will make the maneuvers and we'll figure out where the opening is at.
But there's still a jail administrator open, there's still one open position. Am I, am I right or wrong, I, I said all of them?
You can say yes, there has not been a named jail administrator as, as a position allocation.
Do you have the part-time secretary hired as well?
Have not filled that position currently. Uh, we had some potential candidates, fortunately it did not work out. That would have been a huge asset, so we're probably most likely going to start advertising shortly to see if we can find a pool to, to vet and see if we can find somebody that fits what we will need, so.
Something else I was going to say, but I don't recall.
Yeah, there's a lot of movement going on and we're still in the next couple of weeks. I'm hoping, you know, you'll get a lot more updates as things transpire. Again, I can't say enough about the employees. It's some of the things that they've stepped up and done during the transition, just like I said, when we were closing it. You know, the employees are the backbone of getting the job done at the end of the day. And we've had some real good ones to depend on, so.
Also seen a lot of officers on the road.
They are working their butts off, deputies, sheriff will admit, they're out there between civil process, uh, you know, summer season, so we're picking up. Uh, they're out there doing the best they can to get the job done. Well, you know, we had a pair, we had several situations over the weekend and.
Heard that.
If, uh, but they're, they're out there doing what they are supposed to be doing. It's nice to see that they're being seen in other areas of the county too, so.
Tell me for screening. I deserved it, hundred percent. Oh, yeah, well, it, I haven't got to the phone yet. There's no other, nobody in the room, anybody on the phone, I do see the transit director, thanks Commissioner Scott. Tony, are you on there?
Good afternoon, or sorry, good evening, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, no, I don't have anything else to report or nothing to report.
I see the report on my iPad, I appreciate that.
Yes, you're welcome. I'm a, we're slowly tinkering with our, with our technologies and we're finding different reporting tools. Um, so it's been, it's been very useful and I'm sure, uh, Commissioner Woltz, he will, will explain a little bit more about that.
Any other elected officials, department heads on the, on the phone or, um, yeah, video? Anybody, Commissioner Scott?
Nobody else I know.
Manners from the floor, any? Motions for adoption? Commissioner reports, Commissioner Scott.
Oh, um, gee whiz, let's see, uh, I was able to make my township meeting this month because they changed the days and they're going to change them again in July. So they won't fall on our meeting night anymore. And I'll be able to go to that Ogumah Township. Uh, went to the city meeting and listened to their business and they, uh, they, they are chugging right along. And a lot of summer activities happen then.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, uh, I was not able to hit Foster, they changed their time on me, something like that happened. Um, Commissioner, uh, Sir Brooke and I went to a department a week ago or so and, uh, up in Hale. And then, uh, MTA was the other night, I thought that was very interesting. And Tim did a great presentation along with the other, other ones, uh. Of course, we said Ryan, Ryan Veder was the, the main speaker, you know, and Mike Bowers was there. Said a few words too for the county staff and our treasurer Karen Zepolski was there also. Um, airport, airport meeting was last week, uh, the fly-in is in till June twenty-first. Everything seems to be online for it. It's probably going to be weather dependent, going to be a very good show. Um, I was not able to hit Parks and Recs with, oh, I was, my flight got canceled in Baton Rouge and I didn't get packed. That was that same day that I missed this meeting too. So I didn't get to Parks and Rec, oh, so, uh, um, gee whiz, I think that's about it, that's about all I got.
Commissioner Woltz.
Um, I just kind of started off with, uh, kind of lead out what Tony was saying with, uh, the transit. I know we did talk two weeks ago about, uh, the possibility, we talked here as a board, uh, because we wanted to let you guys know about the possibility of, uh, the transit being closed from six to seven. Um, and then Tony, obviously, the next week, um, did talk with his team. Uh, Tony is very consistent with his meetings out there. Uh, again, you know, we, we had means to be able to get the data, so we want to take data-driven information to make smart decisions. We know financially out there, we, we do have a fund balance, but we know that we have a loss of revenue. And we know that, that the importance of our Ogumah County Public Transit. Uh, this month of May alone, so far we've had, had over thirty-two hundred riders. So we need to make sure we're doing all the things possible to create sustainability there. Uh, Tony's doing a great job, got a great, great committee out there, a lot of hard work in, lots of transit. Um, last Monday, I was up in Roscommon for the county commissioners meeting. Um, I tried to get up there as much as I can, I'm always part of that meeting, whether it might be sometimes via Zoom. Just a great networking, you know, opportunity. Um, nothing really major to talk about last week. Um, I know an item we're going to continue to discuss is the challenges of a lot of these rural counties um, with their, with their jails and the costs. Um, we did talk about that septic code, you know, we know that that did all fall apart and land up, which was, which was great. But there's still, there's still some people pushing it down in Lansing, so that's an, an item we're going to continue to watch because that septic code would be devastating to many, many residents of Ogumah County. So that's a really important one, we got to keep an eye on. Uh, right after that, it worked out pretty good, I had, uh, MSU Extension, we meet in person only a couple of times a year. We met in Roscommon, um, and went, took a walk in a park over there and had a really nice meeting. Um, just a good example too of a lot of the different things that MSU Extension, you know, does. We talked about from their archery program to a lot of the programs where people actually like, we, you could be an Ogumah County resident and you have questions regarding trees in your yard, you know, there's some issues, the trees don't look right. They can actually contact MSU Extension and they can get the right person involved to help that person. So there's so many things that MSU Extension does. We really want to be able to keep pushing to our, our county residents to, to reach out, to, to look, go online and find out all the great opportunities that you can get through MSU Extension. Um, this past Monday, Commissioner Serbrook and I had a meeting with Well Vance, you know, I'm on that board now. Um, we did hire a new CEO, her name is Trish O'Trimba. I think she's going to do an excellent job, she's been with the, um, corporation for, I think, almost twenty years.
One, over twenty.
Over twenty years, um, so we're really looking forward to what she will bring to the table. June first, she'll go into a transition of working under Diane. And then in the hopes of coming in August, she'll take over as CEO. Um, talked about some of the financial challenges there, a CMA that's in our region, uh, Northern.
Northern Lakes.
Northern Lakes, which is, uh, Trevor's, Trevor City, uh, Leland County having major, major financial issues. Um, and it just sounds like they're bored not making smart decisions. Um, talking millions of dollars in the hole, that obviously affects all of us in our region. So the CEOs of these CMAs, ours, um, Diane, they're having a meeting um, to really try to be able to get this under control. It's been a problem for a while and it's just getting worse, something has got to happen there. Um, let's see, I attended MTA, that was a, that was a really good meeting, we had that at Horton Township, thank you. Um, I think that's, it's all for my, or, it's all for my report tonight. I do also want to thank Steve, um, Steve, how do you say your last name?
Yucus.
Davey, Steve Yucus, he is our new, new Mills Township, uh, Blight Officer. Uh, thank you for taking that on and, uh.
I'll do my best.
Appreciate you being here, I know you tried to improve our meetings, so appreciate your involvement. That's all I have.
Mr. Serbrook.
I attended Horton Township last week, they, uh, had their treasurers resigning and they were going to take and, uh, interview a young lady after the meeting in regards to possibly becoming their new treasurer, but I had Edwards Township directly after that, so I wasn't there while they did that interview and I'm not sure if she's going to take the position or not, I went to Edwards. Um, again, as everybody's talked about Blight, Edwards Township, um, has their own Blight ordinance, they have their own Blight enforcement officer. They had a case that went to court this past week and that case started about a year ago. And it's finally got to the court stage and I'm not sure what the outcome was. But they have an attorney firm that they deal with outside of Midland and somebody else that was at MTA. Said they had that same firm, I don't know if it's Mills that's got that, you guys got the same firm as, uh, Edwards does, so they're, you know, so there is already some groundwork, I guess, for me, some collaboration because two of the townships in Ogumah County are already using this one firm. And it sounds like they know their stuff when it comes to Blight enforcement for township. So I think, you know, I love this idea of, of a collaboration. You know, I also represent West Branch Township, was at their meeting, they have their own Blight enforcement, which is they contracted with the city police. The city police actually are part of their Blight enforcement. They, the patrol officers that patrol the township take care of, uh, the Blight complaints for West Branch Township. They've got some that are pending right now. Um, as Commissioner Woltz said, I had, we attended, uh, transit together. We also had, uh, Department of Health and Human Services meeting together, not much new on the front there. They have, uh, got a new area director. And, you know, we think Lansing's out of touch sometimes, they really are. She told us that in the northern Michigan area, the directors of the MDHHS offices, they share directors, Ogumah and Roscommon have got a shared director. Iasko and Alcone have a shared director. Airneck and Bay have shared directors, this guy, this new area director wasn't even aware of the fact that they had shared directors across the counties up here. That's like, they really, that organization, they're really that out of touch, you know? And there's just a whole lot of disconnects with MDHHS all across the board. You know, I mean, we're hearing it from the public health side of it, we hear it from the mental health side of it. There's a, a new, the state of Michigan is trying to take and, and come up with a new way of funding for mental health organizations right now, there's, I think, nine PIHPs, which are prepaid insurance plans, which are basically, they're the ones that contract them with local CMHs. The state is looking at putting it out for bid for just one across the entire state. Well, northern Michigan doesn't provide mental health services the way Oakland, Wayne, McComb, they are all contracted down there. Here in northern Michigan, we provide our own mental health services. Well Vance, Northern Lakes, the other ones, they have the staff that provide those services. Ones downstate don't do that, they subcontract with private providers. So if they have one big PIHP, I, I, it scares me to death as to what's going to happen to the local mental health services in northern Michigan. Um, so I was on, with the Well Vance board, obviously, where Diane explained that to us. We had our item report, pretty brief item report, but, um, Well Vance is in good shape. They have a fund balance of about three point five million, which is, um, twelve, twelve percent of their annual operating budget. So that's in the ballpark, they're doing well there. Um.
Wow.
Commissioner Scott and I spent three hours this afternoon in contract negotiations. Made some, there was a course as well. And one, uh, with Matt. Um, we made some good headway. We're going to have some hopefully good news here in a couple of weeks that we may be, uh, going to close session to discuss, but.
Nothing tonight?
Nothing.
That close.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're very close with at least one out of the two contracts that we have left yet, so. But I'm very optimistic that it's going to happen, so. Um, again, MTA, Ryan did a fantastic job. And I think, going back to what you talked about, this burned out house in Shady Shores, he told all the township, there's a program that the state has where if the township was registered, when there's a house that burns, if that dwelling is insured, there's a twenty-five percent of the payout goes into an escrow account for the townships to hold on to, to ensure cleanup. Money doesn't get released to the homeowner until that property is cleaned up. There were four or five, I believe, townships that, that Ryan didn't see on the state website. He handed out the information to them so they could get registered, so they could hold that money back in case of an incident like that happens. Or whether that one that you're referring to was actually insured or not, if they're not insured, it's not going to happen, you know, obviously. But it is something, and there were several townships that were there that said that they had held those funds and contacted the homeowner and said, we'll give you money when you get it cleaned up, and actually it was Mills cut a deal with somebody of a fifty-fifty. Eddie Swanson, it was like eight thousand dollars to clean it up, so they made a deal with them, the homeowner to split the, they paid Eddie to take in, um, Swanson's to get, or take care of the problem and then they, and then they got some cash back for, so it works, so, end of my story.
Any incentive is helpful.
Exactly.
I attended nine-on-one, I think that was last week, um, some fire uh, representatives from the fire departments were there. Sounds like, uh, we came to an agreement as far as the PHFs and the eight hundreds, we, we got a second bid to have the equipment moved from the sheriff's office. Uh, the bid was much cheaper, so we are moving forward with that at this time. However, we are encouraging the local fire departments to upgrade to these new handhelds due to recordings, due to, um, um, how well they work, we're just, there's no urgency, but we are encouraging, there's also an individual, Bobby Dak, who's writing a grant for this. As we know, grants take time, but, uh, we are encouraging individuals to move, uh, departments to move forward with that, so. That was a good resolution, uh, there has been two individuals from nine-on-one that have retired. Those individuals had some longevity, so they are down to very, very, uh, missed employees, so there are some openings over there. Our nine-on-one authority sits very well, some information was given about some of the surrounding areas. Our nine-on-one is, um, overall doing very well from a financial standpoint, from an equipment standpoint, the upgrades that have happened. But again, there's, it's, it's a tough job, there's a lot of burnout, there's a lot to it. Um, but it is a good job, if, if you know anybody that's interested, I know Jesse is always, um, interviewing and, and interested, so. Went to the planning commission meeting last night, we have changed those meetings to six PM, starting our next meeting. Last night started at seven and we went till after nine, so we approved special transitory, our, uh, excuse me, add-on open air business to the special approval uses in section six point three of the agricultural rural preservation zoning district. So we add, we added that on, so individuals will still have to come and get a special use permit. But that is like some outdoor sales, RVs, uh, mobile homes, some things like that we added to the, um, agricultural zoning district. Something that Ryan brought up that we're seeing more and more of, food trucks. They're everywhere.
Yep.
They're everywhere, they're kind of like people, when you put it into perspective for me, which I hadn't, kind of like individuals living in campers. Um, there's no taxes, there's no costs, there's, I, I, compared to a restaurant. Um, so Ryan's going to gather some information, there was a lot of conversation on this. Obviously, they have to get licensing through the health department, but right now, that's really, um, Ryan had numerous complaints over the holiday weekends. He brought up a couple of food trucks where they were parked. It was a zoning issue. Um, so this is, we're seeing more and more of these food trucks happening. So Ryan's going to gather some more information to see if some stipulations and see if possibly even some permits can be, or will have to be pulled, maybe the county can make a little revenue on these, um, he's gathering more information. You see them everywhere.
Oh, yeah, afterward.
Um, we, we also just, uh, visited the wind energy system and the solar and wind energy, um, ordinance. There's, there's, we reviewed that last night, Ryan's going to get some with. we reviewed that last night, Ryan's gonna get some with, with some other townships as well. Right now, we're kind of at a standstill with it, uh, but it was discussed. There is, he believes there's one specific case in, uh, Ogama County that's at the state level right now, but the state looks like they're backed up anywhere between one to two years. Um, and there's been some federal stipulations that are coming down the pipe as well, so. We're gonna make sure, if we're moving forward with this, that we do it right, so. That was last evening, I did claims and then my township start next week, the nine-on-one, uh, board meeting is typically, it's the second Wednesday of the month, it's this upcoming Wednesday, so I don't think there's any hot topics on, but in case anybody wants to know, and those meetings are at five fifteen. But all my townships meet this upcoming week. Anything else, anybody miss anything? Uh, general public comment, I wanted you to come up soon and introduce yourself, I know Commissioner Wiltzy kinda hit it, but I was gonna give you the opportunity to speak. I've heard about you this week from some people.
Heard about you.
I did.
Surprised you haven't got some complaints already, because I've gone some to some areas that look a little rough. Uh, my name is Steve Yucus. Uh, my wife and I have had property in, uh, in this area for over thirty years, we recently built, uh, our dream home on Lake Ogama, if you've bought, we bought property there ten years ago, but we love it up here. Uh, I've been involved in the township meetings and wherever I've lived, I've always been involved and uh, Bruce called me and asked me about the, uh, Blight off, or Blight officer, the ordinance officer position. Um, and you know, and I like to get back, it's, I like to try and help, but I saw a need, there's definitely a need. But the issue is monumental, I mean, outside of the economic factors, the, uh, the mental health and the drug issues we're dealing with, it's, it's gonna be a huge undertaking, especially when I'm only allotted twenty hours a week, which is fine, I don't want more. I really don't. My wife's not really happy about this, but, uh, I look forward to working with, with you folks and and at township level, Bruce is very energetic and a smart guy, and I'm really excited about working with him and the board. And frankly, you know, I visited probably a dozen properties in the last week or so. And it's been somewhat positive, so I'm cautiously optimistic, we'll see. So hopefully we get more wins than losses, uh, the process is coming, so that's gonna be the hardest part for me. Uh, to, to learn the process with regard to steps involved. Uh, one of, one of the things, uh, I'm not, well, I may be gonna go there yet, but anyway, uh, I, I learned a lot at the MTA meeting the other night. And frankly, this task force you're talking about, combining these townships and getting everybody under one umbrella, I think that's brilliant, and that would be a huge advantage for all of us, because it's, it's, it's a real problem. And, and folks shouldn't have to deal with this stuff in their backyard or, or next door. If we can help some people in the process, I think that's a good thing, but I'm genuinely excited and, uh, it's just a good, get movement and get started on it, so. I appreciate all your support, Mr. Wiltzy, I appreciate everything you said at the, uh, MTA meeting the other night and, uh, let's go.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And the land bank's helping with this issue as well.
Yes.
On the phone, I, there's an individual that's got his hand up. Are you able to unmute him, Tom? I believe-
Tom, a message to my-
I believe it is, uh, Louis Balance.
This is the dude, the Amtrak.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he was texting me, he couldn't get in the meeting.
I was texting back and forth when I'm doing.
Oh, you're muted, we can't hear anything if you're trying to unmute.
Yes.
Any, anybody else on the phone?
Okay, uh, uh, can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, um, I really appreciate you guys surpassing that, uh, Amtrak thing there, uh. Fortunately, I, I got, uh, shipped to the wrong, uh, uh, I took the wrong current at Albuquerque to, uh, on the, uh, uh, posting on the website there to get, uh, on the meeting there, so. I really appreciate you guys doing that for me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And, uh, as far as, um, maybe an idea for that, uh, space you have in that jail or, or that facility there, um, uh, Shawton County, uh, has a juvenile detention center, uh, that you guys may wanna think about, uh, uh, you, you, uh, getting that utilized for, uh, you know, for some, stuff like that, you know, that's an idea.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your comment.
No problem, thank you.
Any other general public comment on the phone?
Township supervisor. Say something.
There's a township supervisor over there.
I know there is, yeah.
I don't know if she can unmute.
Maybe she talks about Blight, huh?
That's Blight issue in Logan Township.
Is there?
Kathy David, can you unmute?
Down to fifty-five.
Any other public comment? No. Motion to adjourn?
I guess since Roger's not here, I guess I'll motion the adjourn.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Be safe.
Jeez, man.